At this time, I recall the Wednesday, March 21st, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester? Mr. Cho? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Yutman? Mr. Warrenbrun? Mr. Weiskopf? And Mr. Welch?
Here. I believe we do have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? This time, we have approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
It's been moved that the minutes of the February 21st meeting be approved. Is there a second to that? We would call that motion for vote. By voice vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign. That motion is approved. At this time, I'm going to ask that anybody that may want to testify tonight, stand up and be sworn in. This does not obligate you to speak, but unless you've been sworn in, you cannot speak. Okay, do each of you hereby swear or affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications?
We do have one, I believe, just one, and it pertains to the variance cases, so we can mention that specifically during that public hearing.
All right, thank you. Do we have any continued public hearings?
No, there were a number that were continued from last time, but they have been re-advertized and therefore restated now under the new public hearings.
All right. Excuse me. At this time then, we recall for hearing, ZBA 2018-C-02. May we have a staff report, please?
Following is ZBA case 2018-C-02, a request by Richard Altice, individually and as trustee of the Craig R. Weber Testumentary Trust, and Carl M. Weber, on behalf of American Real Estate Company, for a conditional use permit to expand a self-storage facility at 2010 South Philo Road by adding the properties at 1506 and 1510 East Mumford Drive and 2028 South Philo Road in the B3 general business zoning district. In 2016, the property at 2010 South Philo Road, which is directly above the subject properties, was granted a conditional use permit for self-storage facility in ZBA case 2016-C-04. The applicant has indicated that the company is prepared to acquire the three subject properties which are directly south. Their request represents an expansion of their original conditional use, which is existing, would represent expansion. Therefore, they would need a new conditional use permit to the expansion of that business. Just as a reminder, self-storage is allowed as a conditional use in table, 5-1 table of uses in the zoning ordinance. You'll see that the subject properties are currently vacant. They've been used as parking lots or just open fields in the recent years for, or for, they have, for most of their lifespan. They are just north, just south of the current subject property, which as I mentioned, is used by U-Haul for truck rentals, as well as self-storage facilities. This picture is not, this aerial photograph is not current as in the parking lot now, just to the west of the main large building, there are self-storage facility units, which you'll see later in some of the site pictures. The property to the south is commercial. Towards the east, you have some condominium units and single-family homes. Towards the west, you have of the subject properties, there's a duplex, as well as a multifamily apartment building. For the zoning of the subject properties, they are B3, just like the main U-Haul facility to the north, and the vacant land towards the south. Towards the east, you have R4. Across the street, you have R5 and R3. R5 is for the multifamily apartment building. R3 is for the duplex. Future land use for the subject properties is community business, as well as to the north and south of it. And then, the east and west of the subject properties are residential. Just northwest of the subject properties is multifamily, reflecting their current use. The pictures on the top are along East Mumford Drive. That picture on the upper left is if you were facing directly west. And then, if you go a little further down the street and you look directly north, you will see the existing U-Haul facility. If you go further west down the street and you veer towards the northeast, that's what that picture on the bottom left looks like. And then, the picture in the corner right is facing northeast, viewing, view of the entire subject property. You'll see the existing trees on the property, as well as the vacant land, and then just some of the storage rental facilities at 2010 South Philo. The request by the applicant is to add additional self-storage units, as well as space for truck rentals. This is a site plan indicating the entire site, not just the subject properties, but it would represent a whole view of what the business would look like if they were granted the conditional use permit. They would be adding six new buildings, ranging from as little as sixteen, 1,650 square feet, to as much as 3,500 square feet. It would be 127 new units totaling about 16,500 square feet. It would be about an increase of 22% of the existing storage capacity, storage unit total for the property, for the main facility to the north. The buildings that they would be adding would be metal and painted white with some orange accents. It's worth noting that, in the original case, there was mention of a storm sewer that runs underneath the western side of 2010 South Philo that was created with a access easement by the Public Works Department. That storm sewer also runs under these subject properties along at 1506 and 1510 Mumford and 2010, I'm sorry, and 2028 South Philo. The site plan reflects no structure being put over where that storm sewer runs under, and one of the conditions would be the creation of an easement. The applicants have agreed to put in additional landscaping to act as, to provide some visual enhancements to the site. They plan on keeping some of the existing trees that are on this, about, little under a dozen, and they would be adding in several trees and shrubs to provide enhancement. The supplement that I passed out at the beginning of the meeting indicates a slightly updated landscaping plan. It indicates that the species of those trees are what's called paperback maple, and then the shrubs are called green velvet boxwood. There is also worth noting a line of trees you'll see in the upper left-hand picture along Mumford Drive of some existing trees within the parkway of the public right-of-way. So with the application and according to Section 72 of the zoning ordinance, there are the criteria to be considered for a conditional use permit. One, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. In our staff report, we say that the additional self-storage units provide a variety of rental options to the public at an accessible location along the main arterial, provides use for a vacant commercial site, and it's complementary to the truck services that they, truck rental services that they offer. A lot of people will rent a truck, but also use it to, when they're moving at the end of the month, when their lease is up, they'll be able to store some of their belongings in the storage units and then easily pick it up to take it to their new place. The applicant indicates that's a major part of their business. The second criteria, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. In our analysis, we determined that it would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the public welfare for that district. It would be of a scale and intensity that's consistent with the existing use just to the north and along the corridor of Philo Road. The Public Works Department of the city has indicated that they do not believe that the traffic flow or customer volume would exceed the capacity of the site, or the streets that would be used nearby. And the applicant has agreed to provide landscaping along the southern and western portions of the site to enhance the visual appearance. And the third criteria, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except for where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 76. And there's also in our analysis that all applicable regulations and would, that the proposed use does preserve the essential character of the zoning district, and that it's, that the application as presented does meet all applicable zoning and building safety regulations in the city. Between when our application was received and when our, the public notice was made for this application, we did receive several, you'll see one communication attached from a nearby resident expressing concern about traffic, as well as noise and lighting. There also, several residents had contacted me and talked with me about some similar concerns, about the visual appearance of Mumford, you know, of along Mumford Drive, as well as what traffic might go along Mumford Drive as well. It was noted that in the previous ZBA case in 2016, that there was, people had requested the possibility of screening along Mumford Drive, but the determination of the board at that time was that screening could not be mandated for properties that were not being used or belonging to the applicant. In this case, now that they've, they're set to be, come under acquisition under the same property owner, the applicant is prepared and willing to meet that accommodation. Some of the other questions were about the use of the actual storage units themselves. The applicant should be able to provide, to elaborate on what they do allow and what they don't allow within, within those storage units, as well as concerns that nearby residents expressed about lighting. The applicant has indicated a willingness and the capability of having lighting levels that are adjustable and can be changed in case of problems with light trespass as well. It should also be noted that the applicant is required to submit a photometric plan as part of the approval of their building permit, a plan which is compliant with zoning ordinance requirements. Mr. Aaron Freeman is here representing the applicant. He is the district manager for U-Haul in this region. Did you have any questions? I should also actually mention that our, I'm sorry, our staff recommendation is to grant the proposed conditional use permit with the following conditions, that the applicant submits a site plan that contains any adjustments deemed necessary for compliance with the city's municipal codes. The use generally conforms to the site plan submitted in this application in Exhibit D that shows the outdoor storage units located outside of the storm sewer line. An easement for the storm sewer line is created between the property owner and the city's Public Works Department. And the fourth condition being, there is landscaping installed and maintained along Mumford Drive and Philo Road that provides screening, which is consistent with the landscaping plan submitted in this application in Exhibit D. Okay. Now, I may be able to answer any questions.
I should also point out, we just received another communication, so I didn't know if you were going to mention it, but this was just handed out from a Ms. Eileen Borgia. Hopefully, I got that approximately correct.
Excuse me, I don't think the microphone system is working. And if you don't mind while they're working on it, I'd better get my speaker get more loudly. We would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
What?
You got a question?
Yeah. What did you say?
No, from the zoning board. We all don't, you all can speak, but you're not allowed to ask questions of the staff. Any questions of the staff?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there had been any complaints about traffic in that area since the previous kind of U-Haul, like sighting of all the additional storage and stuff, if there had been any traffic issues in the area?
There had been no traffic issues that we'd been made aware of
Okay.
from Public Works or from us.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes. What is the difference between B3 and community business?
Community business is the future land use designation. In the comprehensive plan, there is a, you know, a designation of what the property should be, you know, designated for in the next 10, 20 years. B3, and that's just a suggestion, a strong, you know, indicates what zoning should match for. The B3 is the actual zoning in which our zoning ordinance has for zoning code and, you know, permitted uses, development regulations, et cetera.
So this, this pink, community business really doesn't change that?
No, it's the zoning ordinance that is the legal mechanism. The future land use map is simply a guide.
Okay.
And they're, they're both meant to be consistent with each other, in which this case, they are.
Any further questions? Thank you. Is, is the petitioner, representative from the petitioner here, or the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant, here? And do they wish to speak? Our procedures require you to sign that slip as well.
Hi, my name's, my name's Aaron Freeman, company president of Illinois, and I was just hoping to get our uses granted in this particular property next to us. It's pretty ran down and dilapidated. It's an eyesore for us. I'm not sure of the extension for the neighbors. I was, most of the feedback was that it was, it's pretty rundown. I look forward to revitalizing it and, you know, adding some more security and some landscaping, and addressing any concerns with the neighbors. Our, our, our use is pretty quiet use, and there's, doesn't bring any strangers to the community. Most of our customers come within about a one or two mile around us. So we're all for feedback as well, as they, as our neighbors typically are our customers too, so our goal is to just improve it and invest in Urbana.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. I have a couple questions here in regard to the site plan. Are these three access points on Mumford Drive, are you planning to open them? I can't quite tell, and maybe it says in here, but there's three access points that currently now have barriers there, and it looks like perhaps you're planning to utilize them?
We anticipate using the main access point at all times, and we have signage that helps direct customers away from those access points. We do not anticipate using those additional access points there. So we, and we've done this elsewhere, is we hold signage with arrows, or even put paint on the ground with an arrow pointing in or an out to direct customers. And just as it has all along, we plan on not skipping that beat. It's working out really well for us to have everybody to come through the main access point, and it's confusing for customers when there's several different points of access.
So will the barriers remain then? Is that what you're saying?
The, the barrel barriers will
Yeah.
will not remain. We will replace it with some signage and some arrows that can direct customers to not use that entrance.
So, but will they be blocked to traffic, or will they be open?
They will be open to traffic.
Okay. And it's not, I couldn't quite tell from the plan what kind of the traffic pattern was within the site, and to what it's, like what types of vehicles would be using those, or if they were necessary, I guess?
Using the access points?
Right, those three along Mumford.
We just, we simply don't anticipate utilizing those access points.
But you are going to open them?
We are, but it's, it's really just so we're, so there's just not flower plants there, I suppose.
Okay, so, I, I mean, I'm masking because I don't know, I can't tell if traffic, if we're like paying attention to traffic on Mumford, if that's an issue, or if you're just planning on using the main one. If you open those access points, I presume there's going to be additional questions about traffic in and off of, in and out on Mumford?
So as in, to keep the, I guess, the potted plants to remain there?
I'm simply asking if they're going to be blocked or open, and it sounds like they're going to be open, which leads to additional questions I might have about additional traffic on that street.
Yeah, I understand. At this time, we'd leave them open with signage directing customers not to use those points. It's worked out well for us in the past. I've been using them for the past 15 years now in storage development, including one in Springfield that we did adjacent to school, and we've had zero problems with, our customers not reading the signs or the, you know, do not enter, or the arrows that are on the ground. It's just, it's, it works.
Okay.
Just as any traffic signal or sign would work.
Okay.
I guess you'd have to obey it. I should...
Sure. Okay. So is there, I know that there weren't, they said that the, the city said that the road could handle additional capacity, and there's not a lot of anticipated traffic, like the numbers are quite low. But these three access points have been approved as like acceptable in terms of access management for the area?
The city's Public Works Department determined that they, we did not have to require them to be closed off, that the existing in their current state was acceptable if the applicant so desired to use them.
I should also point out, on the far east side, there's a 20-foot easement for emergency fire protection. I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but I would imagine they would prefer if the barriers were not blocking their entry to use that easement.
That's correct. That was addressed in the past as well, when we were inquiring about the particular property.
Okay, I do have another question about landscaping.
Okay.
The choice of the paperback maple, or honey locust, or whatever it is, was there any thought, I mean, as you can tell in the pictures, at least six months out of the year, there's no leaves on those trees anyway. Was there any thought to putting in evergreens or something that would provide more consistent shielding?
So working with city staff and what particular site or plants that should go there, there's power lines that are over it, so something low-growing was strongly recommended there.
Okay. Were there any evergreen options within the low-growing category?
The bushes that we had selected are, they're all year-round. They're boxwoods. I think they get up to four feet.
Okay, which is, I mean, generally below eye level, but, I mean, I would, in terms of shielding, I think that it would be more appropriate to put in some sort of evergreen or something larger to have sufficient shielding, if that's, if that's the goal. Because those ones, those, two of those buildings are right up on the property line. To shield those, you would need more than a couple trees, but...
I'm open to alternative landscaping. The concern was the power lines that are above it, and how quickly they will grow, and how often they would have to be replaced out. So something that would remain somewhat low and also provide a nice landscaping theme in conjunction with the current trees that are there.
Was there any discussion of a fence along that?
There has been some recommendations from, for a fence from the neighbors, but we actually installed a fence behind the property to separate from the residents and the commercial. One thing I deter from doing is putting fence up around our facility, specifically a privacy fence. Just creates too many pockets and holes to invite misuse, or invite, I guess, the wrong people there. It's kind of like, I guess it builds more of a prison theme, and we're hoping to go more open and not, and deter any pockets or areas that can't be seen.
I should also point out that a privacy fence would not be allowed in this location if it was within the required front yard. It would have to be an open fence or low.
Open fence as in like a...
Picket, see-through, basically.
Okay.
We define front yards as anything that is along a street frontage, so even if the building doesn't face that direction, if it's along a street, it's considered a front yard. That's all I have right now.
I just have more of a comment than a question. This whole endeavor is based on a belief that more storage is needed, more facilities, correct?
Yeah, it's definitely a service to the community.
And this is self-stored, so that the hours are unlimited, 24/7?
There's restrictive hours. It's during business hours. Now, I think 1% of our customers actually attend it after hours. It's not really a use that you come in the middle of the night to get something. It's usually during business hours during daylight. We're open seven to, seven typically.
Again, just seeing some of the concerns raised, is there some way that locks or something where someone can't get in there? You said after business hours, or is that just some kind of honor system?
It's not an honor system. Each room is individually alarmed, and it identifies whether customers are after hours or not, and that's, that's kind of how it's really monitored. And that's, that's kind of how it's really monitored. It's really not that, it just hasn't been an issue to require a lock or a fence or anything in that nature.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the, you know, the long, many buildings, those each have alarm systems on them, too?
Every one, individually alarmed with also video surveillance. Per building is, has a video surveillance, and each unit is individually alarmed.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you. At this time in our procedures, we ask anyone in favor or support of the application to come forward. If you're in favor. I'll get, I'll get to that, please. We have orders here and procedures. Is there no one then in favor? All right, having established that, now, and one at a time, we can't, we can't accommodate comments that are being made as people are speaking. One at a time, those opposed to the application come forward. And again, ma'am, we require that you sign in.
Good evening. Is my mic on? Sure. My name is Eileen Borja. I live at 2007 Apartment B, Eagle Ridge Court in Urbana. I write to request that this, about this, I write to tell you about what I think about this, this plan. I was in favor of the arrival of the U-Haul company when they did. They have definitely improved the neighborhood. They have, I don't know what the police records show, but I think crime is, has reduced, and they are good neighbors. And our having a new fence in the back has been just a great addition, and that was part of their original plan, was to fence that back. So, for those things, I really am grateful. However, I don't, I don't support any expansion to this, this, this business. There's a Warner Brothers cartoon that uses the phrase, "enough is too much." First of all, I wonder if the facility is more than a self-storage commercial site. I am one of the lucky neighbors who experienced the coming and going of at least three to five semi-trucks every day, sometimes on the weekends, with their noise and odor. There, there are more deliveries now from the loading and unloading of the semi-trucks at the U-Haul than ever were at the grocery stores. And I've experienced both, and it's unpleasant. Although the signage reads "self-storage," it appears that it's industrial storage, of maybe warehouse proportions. I am willing to be corrected on exactly what is going on there. Second, as far as the traffic is concerned, I don't think you could really, unless someone did a very good study, tell which, which business is providing increased traffic. I will say that, and this is not your, I know it's not of your purview, but with no traffic light at the intersection of Philo and Mumford, access to the Mumford Road is dangerous all the time. So, if more trucks are going to be stacked up and entering even their main entrance, it's just going to exacerbate the traffic problem there. And that's for another committee, I suppose. I do appreciate the efforts the company has made to prevent crime with the, with the, however, the bright spotlights really may, I don't know if they're preventing crime, but I do know that recent research suggests that bright lights do not deter crime. The shining lights cast shadows on the individuals who are in the path of the lights. In addition, the bright spotlights are an endangerment to birds and other nocturnal animals. The light trespass into my windows at night is a constant violation of my right to an uninterrupted sleep. Now, if you, thinking of the aesthetics of the neighborhood, if you drive along either direction, north or south, on South Philo Road, you observe that each building has a minimum of green space. Mostly, it's a narrow strip of grass. A few, like the funeral home, have reserved more land for their green space. The lots at 1506 and 1510 East Mumford could offer the U-Haul company an opportunity to improve and increase the green space. Right now, there's blacktop, orange, white metal trucks. It does not have much of a nature aspect to it. And instead of making it a parking lot for more trucks, I would suggest that maybe some short native grasses could be planted, which would not add, which would not require much maintenance, but it would contribute to the community by having a little bit more green space. And so, those are most of my concerns. And again, I was, I am glad that U-Haul is there, but I want us to think carefully about, there's a phrase called "mission creep," and I just hope we're not getting "storage creep" into southeast Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, next person, please. You have to sign in, sir.
Hi, I did. My name's Fred Schliff. I've lived in Urbana for, what, 48 years?
You have to sign our paper.
Pardon?
He already signed in.
Oh, you are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I've lived here 48 years, and I was one of the first people to build a house in Eagle Ridge. I think the great thing about Eagle Ridge was that at that time, there was no place in Urbana to build a good-sized house. Eagle Ridge was zoned R1. I think at that time, the only other R1 zoning was Meadow, which is a boulevard about a block long. And so, we were, we were kind of feeling adventurous, and I think it's paid off. It's been a very nice neighborhood. I think the U-Haul facility has been a very attractively-mained facility. It's kind of gaudy, but it's, it's clean and neat and tidy, and it looks very well managed. And they've, I think, been very, very good neighbors. The thing that concerns us, I think especially in the subdivision, is the approach to our subdivision. In recent years, it's been singularly ugly because of the rundown driveways. And the suggested changes sound very good to me. However, I would like to see the two driveways not called for by the city to be removed. I think closing those two aprons and replacing them with foliage would make a tremendous difference to the appearance of the area and to the approach to what has been, I think, an unusually forward-looking subdivision.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Fred Lawrence. I live in 2104 Eagle Ridge Court. I'm the president of the Eagle Ridge Homeowners Association. I would just like to say that I am very pleased with the work that U-Haul has done. I think they're good neighbors, and they've done a fine job in every respect. I would only say that we would really like to close those two avenues of access onto Mumford, the westernmost, because that would greatly improve the situation for us. And so, I reinforce what Fred Schliff said as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not know whether, I am Linda Lopez. I live at 2102 Meadowlark Court, Urbana, which is at the very bottom of Mumford. And I do not know that there's any way of my sharing these pictures from here. So, if I may, I'll just talk about them for a moment. These were taken earlier today, and perhaps it will better explain some of our concerns, not knowing whether all of you have had a chance to come out today. First picture shows looking across at the apartment buildings, therefore, I'm showing Philo Road. The second one is showing the improved building of the orange, et cetera, that U-Haul has done. And then, I continue towards the back of the building. This is looking at the area that we would like to have planted. And some of these trees are really in poor shape, so I think in addition to a landscape person, we need someone out there to look at the health of the trees. This is looking at the fence, and it's also just over the roof line, showing the house, and how close we are to the business property with our residential property. This is showing the barrels and the driveways in question, and the barrels were only put there to hopefully add some green and add some pleasantries. Okay, we talked about lines, power lines, and if one looks carefully, the power lines are on the city side, meaning if I'm standing on the sidewalk, the power lines are to my right, and the lines going down by the business, there is no clearance. I have looked at it. I have called country arbors. I have gotten a couple of estimates on arbovites, which would grow taller. They would grow in our lifetime. They could be spaced in a manner. If possible, taking out those two driveways and making it continuous, so that we have somewhat of an archway or a covering of trees, separating the households from the business. I looked at pine trees and some other trees. If I stick around 40 years, I'll see them, but I'm not planning on sticking around 40 years. I did look across at Head Start. Head Start has picked plants in place. The back row here is against the homes. Head Start moved their playground further from the homes so that the trees can be not only a visual barrier, but a bit of a sound barrier, and kids don't need to poke things through the fence. So, hopefully, I will, in fact, just pass these down for you to see where we, as neighbors, would like to have an attractive entrance and still look like a neighborhood. We're also quite concerned that if by chance someone doesn't read the sign, once they are on Mumford, there is no way out. So, these trucks or cars would need to come into the neighborhood to turn, and the other part of that being, even if we're speaking big trucks, it's little trucks, the quick trucks, the other trucks that we also are very concerned. Head Start is just across the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marie Reeves, and I own the duplex across from U-Haul. Now, they're all talking about the entrance into Eagle Ridge, beautifying that. However, mine, when you open the drapes, if they move all those units and trucks over, that's going to be my view and the view for my tenant also. And he's talking about shrubs. Well, we're still going to see the trucks, and they pull up all the way to the sidewalk. They have them lined up there. And as for the orange, we see all those orange doors from my viewpoint. So, I'm against this. I've lived there for over 20 years, and in real estate, they say "location, location, location." Well, when I moved in, there was a nice grocery store across the street and several other businesses. It was the IGA, and it was a complement to our neighborhood. You could just walk over to the grocery store and shop and walk back. Also, I feel that I depend on my rent from the rental unit. And I think it's going to be harder to rent when people see the orange across the street and all the trucks lined up. Also, I think the worth of my duplex will go down, because if you, if you come and just stand in front and look across, you're going to see all the orange doors and all the trucks lined up. That's what's going to greet people in the morning when they open their drapes over there. I would also like to state that my, my duplex that I rent passed the Urbana City inspection with flying colors a year and a half ago. And as far as planting some shrubs and a couple of trees, that won't block the eyesore across the street. It's an eyesore for me because I'm looking directly at it. So, please, put yourself in my position, and would you like to live across the street from that unit? And if you would, I'm willing to sell you my duplex. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hi, I'm Sebastian Frith. I'm relatively new to the neighborhood, and I want to echo what my neighbor said about, so far, they do seem to have been pretty receptive to our requests, which is nice. And this fellow, I just sat next to him, and he seems like a pretty nice guy. I do also worry about my property prices going down. And I'm, I'm more worried about them paving over the current grass that is on the corner of Mumford and Philo and putting big trucks there. I just don't think it's going to be a good look for anyone on Philo Road. I am super excited to hear that they are willing to landscape that area because it is desperately needed. If they don't do it, I think Urbana ought to get on it, because it's looking pretty bad. It worries me that they are planning to open those access points. It says "existing access to remain," to remain, that worries me. That road, East Mumford Drive, was put in 20 years ago and promptly forgotten about by the city. It is totally torn up and desperately needs to be repaved. And so, the idea of having increased traffic going through East Mumford, even if it's an accident, like my other neighbor mentioned, does worry me. I appreciate what Ashley McLaughlin pointed out, which is that for a good half of the year, these kinds of trees are leafless and aren't really going to do a whole lot. So, I do think that we need to put in some, if this is going to move forward, that they need to work with our neighborhood to come to some kind of mutual understanding on beautifying that corner. Because at least now, we have some grass. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roseanne Barak, and I live at 2009 Eagle Ridge Court. And that's directly in back of the U-Haul building. So there's my place, you know, a yard, a little yard, a fence that they've just renovated and the back of the U-Haul. It does get very loud when there are a lot of trucks that come in and out during the day, but it's mostly on weekdays and, you know, during regular hours, so I figure that's what's going to go on when there's a business there. They have done an amazing job of renovating that property. The concrete was a mess over the entire lot, and the area they have is now pristine, you know, it really is. However, there are a lot of blue and white and orange buildings, so I agree with my neighbors that, you know, more of those buildings, especially right along the edge of the line going up Mumford, would be a detractant, even with their proposed gardening or whatever, you know, whatever. They do need fir trees of some kind there. There are fir trees, arborvitae's and others, that don't grow more than 20 feet tall. And that's at, you know, that's at the end of their life, so there's an awful lot of possibilities out there. And definitely that kind of a look. Now, I don't know if they want, if U-Haul wants the property to show from Mumford. Do you want exposure on Mumford? I mean, you have that whole front.
It's not exposure, it's concealment. I guess if we're putting the trees directly behind the structures there.
Well, do you have to have structures that close to the edge of them? I mean, can there, can it be a little bit? I mean, I was in favor of a fence until you said there couldn't be a fence along that, you know, along that area. Because, you know, I think two of those accesses, definitely two out of the three should be disposed of. The front one, I understand, you know, the one on the very front of Mumford, I can understand them having access there. But the other two, they have not been used and are not useful, they're all torn up concrete, and, you know, might as well get rid of them. And then you're limiting the access in off of Mumford. I think that's an easy solution for U-Haul. You know, I think we need to be reasonable. They've been really good to us, you know, they really have. And I think we need to be reasonable and accommodate them where we can. I don't see a need for extra structures, you know, or extra units. However, it's their business. If they're buying the property, it certainly is their, they can put anything they want on it, I would believe, you know, within, so we really don't have any say about that. But I do think that we, you know, that they will accommodate us if we're reasonable to them. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to be heard?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Lloyd Allman. I live at 1605 East Mumford, right next to the, what used to be Happy House and is now Head Start. The one thing that I think is very concerning to me is that if a semi or any trucks come down Mumford and they see a sign that tells them that they're not supposed to go in there, guess where they go? They don't have any place to turn around, especially a semi. There is no place. I believe that those access points that they're talking about should be closed. Because if you take a semi and he sees a sign, I used to be a semi driver, I know. If he sees a sign that he's not supposed to enter there, he's going to keep going because he's going to think there's an outlet down there. There is no outlet. So what's he going to do? He's going to have to turn around by going down one street and then backing across the intersection to get out of there. Then when he does that, he gets up to Philo Road, and Philo is a bad place to get out of now because of the traffic. And if you've got a semi trying to get out of there, think about it. Think about how difficult that would be for him or any cars that are behind him, any traffic behind him. So I encourage you to really consider closing off those points. Because we do have some children in that neighborhood. I've got one that's eight years old. And I'm telling you, if I've got semis that are backing across my intersection because they do not have a place to turn around, what are they going to do? Those kids are out there playing. So I point out, and I'm like everybody else here, I compliment U-Haul for what they've done, but close off those entry and exit points and landscape it properly. And then I think that everybody here would be very happy with that. I used to own a business myself, so I understand his standpoint from owning a business, understand that. But you still have to consider the people that are there. And from everything I've heard, he's been easy to work with. So let's work together, close off those points, and keep those semis off of Mumford. That street, if you've driven down Mumford lately, you don't need any semis in there turning it up. And if you're turning a semi around on the intersections, I guarantee you, it's going to only get worse. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? All right. In light of what has been said, does the applicant petitioner want to be heard again?
Yes, please.
Come forward.
So in regards to the semis coming down Mumford, all of our deliveries receive specific instructions on the access point and most occasion mapping on where to enter our facility to make our deliveries for our retail sales. And typically, they're the same drivers, and it's never really an issue. I don't believe it's been an issue thus far. And I really can't stress it enough with the right signage. Just as I've worked with the local community, if it's not working, then we just shift gears and see what else can work. I've had really good success with it, with communication with customers and with the delivery drivers, that it just hasn't been an issue. In response to the lady that has the lighting issue that's shining in her window or her house, I can just shut the light off or unplug it. That's not a problem. I've done that before in the past. And if it's creating an issue, actually, there was another neighbor adjacent to us that the light was too high, so we just lowered it, and it solved the problem. Or remove it altogether since it's in the back. It creates a security issue, but if it's more of a detriment or a harm to having a light in your window, I wouldn't want that on my property, so I get it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll give you my card before you leave, and I'll make sure it's gone. I'm open to look at the health of the current trees. If they're in bad shape, they haven't been taken care of, so I'm absolutely open to explore that. Never entered a community that we brought the property value down. By our investment in this development, it always enhances the current property value, especially with the current state. I mean, we just got done with the one that was next to the school in Springfield, and it just improved the overall area there. I don't know if you guys have seen the new one in Bloomington, that's just, we just developed here in the last year. And it's, we've had full support from the community how we've taken an old dilapidated property and really got it turned around. I've had the local police here thank us for being there because it was quite the crime haven, I guess. And, you know, a lot of this with the structure locations and the access, it really boils down to economics. My approach to this is really to improve the adjacent property, not to bring down the property around us. I'm not thrilled with the current state of the property, and it's my goal just to add it as an extension use. And as many have mentioned here tonight, get it looking clean, inviting, and just really clean it up. That's it, unless there's any other questions.
Are there any questions? Hold on.
So the issue with the driveways, if the one furthest east stays open for emergency access, what, I guess, what is the trade-off between using signage versus having a physical barrier in those two other driveways that are closer to Philo?
I don't understand the question.
So there's three driveways. The two closest to Philo Road, you talk about putting signage up to deter traffic. But I guess why not just leave a physical barrier there to prevent additional, you know, truck traffic on Mumford Avenue?
Anytime if you purchase a property in real estate and there's access points that are there, it actually decreases the value of your state of property when you close access points off. So from an investment, from getting a loan from a bank or anything, these are features that are looked at in order to get refinanced or anything in that nature. It adds value, and by removing them, devalues the property, and it's been devalued in its current state enough. And that's kind of where it goes back to the economics of the, investing in it, I suppose.
And I'm not actually suggesting removing the driveways, but keeping a physical barrier as opposed to signage. I mean, if you're not using the access points, they're still there. I don't know.
If that's a concession, I'm open to it. I would first like to explore signage to see how it works. But if it's a requirement by the city, I'm open to, you know, have Plan A, Plan B, and see how that goes. As I, I mean, we're really, I'm here because of the neighbors around us. We're not here to cause any strife, so usually if there's a problem, just like the light, I try to solve them.
Thanks.
So are you talking about signage that would say, "Do not enter"?
Yes.
Or?
Do not enter, typically, the, I guess, less invasive are just arrows that point Just as it remains now, there's actually, I have signage up that has an arrow that says, "Equipment returned here," and it directs the customer so it doesn't confuse them to drive down Mumford currently. I would have that signage in place there that would direct the customer to go down to enter in the current main drive. Just as I mentioned before, when customers come in and out of the property, or when there's multiple access points, it's confusing for the customer and it causes confusion for us too. So having one way in, one way out is a preferable method.
So I was thinking that people who would go to their units might want to take the shortcut to get out rather than go around. So how would you deter them from doing that?
I guess the signage would be the main thing, really. Whether the curb was blocked off or the sign was there, I don't know how effective the curb would be if you've already turned down Mumford and know where to turn around. I think it's working now, and it will continue to work with the appropriate signage there.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you. Is there any more comments or discussions from the board? Hearing none, then I believe we're ready to have the motion called.
Yes, I know. Okay. I make a motion to approve ZBA. Oh, I make a motion to approve ZBA case, ZBA 2018-C-02. A request by Richard Thies individually and as trustee of the Craig R. Weber Testamentary Trust and Carl M. Weber on behalf of Amoco Real Estate Company for a conditional use permit to expand a self-storage facility at 2010 South Philo Road by adding the properties at 1506 and 1510 East Mumford Drive and 2028 South Philo Road in the B3 General Business Where'd it go? I've lost it.
Page five are conditions.
Hey, Joanne, I just want to mention that I did note on the fourth condition that where it says there is landscaping installed, that the words "and maintained" should be added after "installed."
Okay. Thank you. I forgot what I said.
You didn't ready to add any conditions, you just made a motion.
Okay, I recommend that, condition that the applicant submits a site plan that contains any adjustments deemed necessary for compliance with the city's municipal codes. Number two, the use generally conforms to the site plan submitted in this application in Exhibit D that shows the outdoor storage units located outside of the storm sewer drain. Three, an easement for the storm sewer line is created between the property owner and the city's public works department. And four, that the landscaping installed and maintained along Mumford Drive and Philo Road, there is landscaping installed and maintained along Mumford Drive and Philo Road that provides screening which is consistent with the landscape plan submitted in this application in Exhibit D.
It's been so moved, do we have a second to that? It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion about the motion?
I would like to propose that we add in four, that there is, so, okay, there's landscaping installed and maintained along Mumford Drive and Philo Road that provides screening which is consistent, which... that provides screening which is consistent, which is consistent with the landscape plan submitted in the application in Exhibit D, but includes higher, more dense evergreens than is in the exhibit or landscape plan.
May I ask clarification?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that would include, because if you look at the landscape plan, they are proposing to keep a lot of the existing.
Right.
There's potentially some that are in poor health.
Right.
So, is the trade-off to remove some of the existing? Or in order to make room? Or just to replace the species that are currently proposed?
I think to reconsider the ones that are currently proposed, to be actually shielding. The ones that are proposed don't seem to shield.
Okay. I don't know if Chris has something to add, since the city arborist did meet on site.
The city arborist indicated that arboridite trees or evergreen trees, anything that would be very tall would present problems with the power lines, that a tree would need to be low enough to not get the risk. If it's anything over, approaching 10 or 12 feet, there'd be problems with the power company as well as public works. So, when we were working with the applicant, we suggested a species of trees that were more medium height that would, that could fit in on the site with the existing trees. Otherwise, you'd have to plant much further back to make sure that trees of a significant height wouldn't begin in the way with the power lines.
I think that's possible, still with the denser evergreen. But also, are we talking about immediately under the power lines? Or there's also that space on the other, behind the sidewalk, or north of the sidewalk?
This was for the, even though that these trees were on the other side of the sidewalk, city arborist said that that's still of a distance that's still considerably too close for what the power company is comfortable with for trees that tall.
Okay. So, I would just change mine to be denser evergreens that are lower than 20 feet or whatever the arborist's height restriction is, if that's the catch.
Am I being too specific?
Yeah.
Maybe the condition is to revisit with the arborist to propose?
To revisit the landscape plan?
Landscape that meets seasonal coverage. I guess that's the thing, if leaves are coming off in the winter and that's not sufficient coverage then.
Like year-round coverage?
Perhaps the arborist has, because that's what his expertise is in, could probably present a type of shrub or a tree that would meet that. I think if he's like evergreen, then.
Sure. Right, the point is that it's year-round coverage.
I just want to point out that a lot of what's proposed is existing, so you won't have year-round coverage unless you're replacing those. So, I just want to make sure that's clear.
That the new ones being added.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry to harp on that. I just want to make sure the intent is clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
I don't know.
No, we're gonna let you go ahead, come back up to the.
Well, I've got a long voice.
Oh, yeah, and you're walking with a cane. Go ahead from right there.
As long as you're putting up a shield along Mumford, what about on Philo, where I look out my friend room window? If you're gonna shield on Mumford across from a cornfield, why can't you shield on Philo where there's a house or a duplex?
So, I am looking, I'm really only talking specifically about where those structures are right up against the sidewalk, or just a few feet from the sidewalk. I was not talking about Philo.
It should be noted that the landscaping plan, you'll see, let me go to it quickly on the PowerPoint.
This dimension, this, from here to there is 10 feet.
That the landscaping plan addresses the entire perimeter of the subject properties with their frontage along Philo and Mumford. So, this is not, this talk, I mean, a lot of it is, that we're talking about is on Mumford, but it also.
I was clearing if taller shrubs on Philo would be okay with the applicant. So, I thought the answer was yes, but apparently not, so.
I'm okay with Mumford, but my, just the main drag on putting shrubs around the entire property is concerning. To do something along Mumford Drive, I've already done, I've spent $46,000 in landscaping on Philo Road. And I just, I don't know how much more we could do if this were existing. Something I don't currently have, I'd like to work with it, but, I mean, something that we already planted to take them all out or to add, I just, I don't.
Can you go back to the table so that I can pick up what you're saying? Go ahead.
If we have to put a concession in to readdress the landscaping plan with the local arborist that's recommended on what we can do, it's conducive with the power lines and on Mumford Drive, I support that. I just, I misunderstood. I didn't realize we had to now go and redo the entire landscaping on Philo Road as well.
No, the, I believe the request was, the inquiry was just for the frontage of Philo for these particular properties, not for, if I understand what you're, if I understand correctly, not for the entire stretch of Philo, for, not for the 2010 property, just for the property at 2028, which has, you know, in the landscaping plan that you submitted already, does have landscaping accommodations. So, I, the, what we were referring to is only just around that, you know, for however many feet after the curve around. And then, once it starts on the 2010 property, that would not have to be changed at all.
Okay, I guess, I guess we'd have to just see what it would look like. I was, my goal is to emulate what was on Philo Road to keep it continuing. And I guess, just from a marketing aspect, so it's not two different species of trees in the middle of a business where it separates it. But along Mumford, I could see how it could change differently there.
And I was actually just paying attention to these two structures that were right along the road, which is being like very specific. And there's not a lot of new ones, you know, proposed there. But if we're talking about shielding, that seems to be the most critical spot. And so, looking at something that provides more year-round coverage was really the goal.
Behind the two structures.
That are, right, that are right along that roadway.
We could absolutely come up with something.
Any further questions? Then, I would like for the motion to be re-proposed.
Can I ask a question of the board before we go on?
Go ahead, yes.
I am, I'm not entirely convinced that these two entrances closest to Philo are necessary. And I am a little bit concerned about some of the access management issues they could pose, in particular with the types of vehicles that might be using them on that road and in that neighborhood. How do other members of the board feel about those two access points?
They're fine with me. I, I've had, I had a storage unit for a while. And when I went there, which was not that often, there was generally nobody around. You know, maybe I'd see one other vehicle. I just don't think that, you know, there's very much traffic on a regular basis. Most people are putting stuff in storage and they're leaving it there. They're not going to it every day. I suppose some contractors might have stuff in a unit that they would go to, but.
Mr. Welch, may I say something?
Sure.
Those of us who have lived in the neighborhood.
Ma'am.
No.
Can you come up to the, so it's better picked up?
I'm Eileen Borja.
No, you don't have to reintroduce yourself, just so it's picked up.
Picked up?
On the microphone.
Is it picked up?
Yes, now, go ahead.
The history is that our, the neighborhood people have tried to deter traffic from those two driveways, if you will. Doesn't stop them. We've tried signs, we've tried the barrels, we tried chains across. But it's a very, it's an attractive nuisance to keep those two access points as driveways. And there are others here who know that it's been a constant problem, and we have tried our solutions. I don't see where it would be such a problem, and I'm not an engineer, to just add curbs so that the slant parts of those driveways would not invite people to make U-turns there. And that's the issue. And that curbs, we've even had those temporary or those section curbs there. Nothing stops those who choose to drive there. And I don't even think a sign will do it, because it's just adding one more sign. Thank you.
Okay. Again, along the lines of what I initially said, is I think there's been so much discussion since the motion was made that I believe we should start over. So, is there a motion to be made?
Sure, I move that we grant the proposed conditional use permit in case number ZBA 2018-C-02 for the reasons articulated in the memo and with the following conditions. That the applicant submits a site plan that contains any adjustments deemed necessary for compliance with the city's municipal codes. That the use generally conforms to the site plan submitted in the application in Exhibit D that shows the outdoor storage units located outside of the storm sewer line. That an easement for the storm sewer is created between the property owner and the city's public works department. And that there is landscaping installed and maintained along Mumford Drive and Philo Road that provides screening which is consistent with the landscape plan submitted in this application in Exhibit D. As well as revisiting the landscaping plan with the arborist to see if there are other varieties of acceptable shrubs or trees that would provide more consistent year-round coverage.
Thank you. It's been so moved, is there a second to that? It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? And I believe we are ready for vote.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
That motion carries, and since it's just for a minor variance, no further action is needed by any other body.
It was a conditional use permit.
I'm sorry. You're right, I just said. So, it does not need, it passed by the required majority, so needs no further action. Thank you. Thank you all for your input. It's been enlightening and appreciated. Thank you.
I think that subdivision was built around 1980. And it. Oh, yeah, it's getting pretty close, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
They're short, they're short arborities.
Thank you.
That was a very dingy-looking spot.
All right, at this time, gonna call for hearing. ZBA Major, or 2018 Major 1, ZBA 2018 Major 2, ZBA 2018 Major 3, ZBA 2018 Major 4, ZBA 2018 Major 5, and ZBA 2018 Minor 01. These all are, involve the same property, though I believe when it comes time to vote, we will vote on each request separately. Is there a staff report?
There is. Okay, so. Okay, so all of these, these variance requests pertain to, pertain to one request which, or one main request, which is to allow an addition for the St. Nicholas Orthodox Church at their, to their building at 312 West Elm Street. The main reasons for the addition are to accommodate a larger congregation, to make the building handicap accessible, and to rebuild the church in a style typical of Orthodox churches. So, in addition to these requests, this is in the MOR district. So, the MOR Development Review Board reviewed and approved the site plan and the design for the building on March 1st, 2018. As was mentioned at the start of the zoning board meeting tonight, we did receive one communication, which you have in front of you, from a neighbor who was opposed to the addition. Okay, so. Okay, so this site, the church's site, they own three, three adjacent properties. The first, the westernmost, is on the corner of Birch and Elm Street. That's where the church building is. The eastern two parcels are the church's parking lot. As you can see, let me pull up the site plan. So, as you can see on the site plan, the existing building is built pretty close to Birch Street. It's less than six feet from the western property line. And, let's see, okay, that's the only point I wanted to make on that. And since these all are owned by, since all parcels are owned by the church, we consider it a zoning lot, so it's treated as one lot for zoning purposes. The surrounding zoning is mostly MOR, which is mixed-office residential. To the north, there's some neighborhood business, B2. And most of the surrounding uses are single-family and apartments, or in rental apartments. There are some owner-occupied, single-family, single-family buildings still in the neighborhood. So, onto the requests. I'll just go through each of the variance requests in order. If you want to follow along in Exhibit D, tried to make that as easy to understand as possible, since there are a few variances requested here. The first one is to allow for a building that is about three and a half feet taller than the zoning, than the max height that's allowed by the zoning ordinance. You can see there's the elevation looking north from Elm Street. And the zoning ordinance allows a 35-foot maximum height. This building would be, as I said, about three and a half feet taller. So, a major variance is required in this case. The second variance request is to increase the floor area ratio from .7 to .92. So, there's a couple things, a couple floor area ratio, I guess, we'd say, I don't know if we'd call them oddities or just some interesting FAR-related things in the MOR district. The first is that in this district, the FAR is capped, or the, sorry, the lot size for floor area ratio calculations is capped at 8,500 square feet. And that's put into, really to prevent somebody from, say, buying up three adjacent properties and then putting up a really massive building that doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. So, so there is a cap for the FAR calculation. Another interesting thing, and this goes beyond. Another interesting thing, and this goes beyond the MOR district, is that in our FAR calculations, we include basements, even basements that are completely below grade. So, in this case, most of the building addition, or a lot of the building, about half the building would be below grade. You wouldn't be able to see it from the public right-of-way, but it still has to be included in the floor area ratio calculations. So, what you're seeing from the public right-of-way could be a one-story building that would easily meet the floor area ratio requirements, but since we do include the basement in there, that's the reason that we need, or that they're requesting a variance for the floor area ratio. The third, the third request is to reduce the open space ratio from .3 to .17. The existing, so the existing open space, if you follow along on your screen where my hand, my virtual hand is at, so the existing open space is sort of in the area to the south of the building, there's some to the east of the building, and then you have the open space in front of the parking lots on the south side. Because of the way that open space is calculated, you can see that the hashed areas sort of to the south of the parking lots are the only areas that would still qualify for open space, so there would be some area over here that wouldn't qualify for open space. And then, of course, the building addition would be taking up a fair amount of the open space that currently exists. As in the FAR calculations, the open space ratio is affected by basements. Basements are included in the open space calculations, because the open space calculations include gross floor area, which includes basements. Again, if basements were not included, this would meet the open space requirements without requiring a variance, but since they have to be included, the variance is necessary. The fourth request is to, is to allow the building addition to encroach up to 11 feet into the 15-foot front yard, which is on the Birch Street side. So, since this is a corner lot, the zoning ordinance treats both the Elm Street side and the Birch Street side as front yards. So, the building already encroaches 10 and a half feet into the Birch Street yard, and the addition would encroach another six inches into that yard. So, that's what this request is for. The fifth request is to allow mechanical equipment to encroach up to six feet into the required yard on the north side of the building. So, currently, the AC units are on the east side of the building, near the entrance, but with the building addition, that would have to be moved, and the optimal place to move it would be to the north side of the building. The mechanical room is right here, is right on the north side of the building, so it makes sense to put the air conditioning unit as close to that as possible, but then it would have to encroach into the, into the required side yard, which is on that side. If you're wondering why the side yard is listed as 11.125 feet, there's a, the zoning ordinance requires additional, additional side yard if a building is taller than 25 feet. So, that's, it pencils out to 11.125 feet. Okay, the final request is for, so the front porch addition would encroach up to three feet into the front yard on the Elm Street side. So, that is the final request, and that's a minor, the minor variance request. So, going through the variance criteria, if you're following along, these are on page four in your memo. So, the first deals ask if there are special circumstances or difficulties in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance, and there are on this site. This building was built before 1973. It's built in its current location, so very close to the property line on Birch Street, on the Birch Street side. So, really, any addition is going to have to go to the east or go to the south, and any addition would likely require at least one variance, probably multiple variances, just based on where the building is located, this being a corner lot, et cetera. Number two is that the variances will not serve as a special privilege, because the variance is necessary, or because the variances are necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or a structure. I just mentioned those special circumstances. And looking at other properties in the MOR district, this seems to be a unique situation, especially for non-residential buildings. There might be some residences that are built close to the property line on a corner, but in terms of non-residential buildings, this seems unique. I did want to point out that a couple other churches in the MOR district have also been granted variances that are similar to what's requested here. So, for example, the First Presbyterian Church received a variance to increase the floor area ratio from .7 to over 1, and to reduce their front yard setbacks by 22% for their building. Also, the Unitarian Universalist Church received a grant, a variance to increase their FAR from .7 to .78. Okay, criteria number three is that the variances requested were not the result of a situation created by the petitioner. The St. Nicholas Orthodox Church purchased this property in 2000, so that was well after the building was built so close to the property line, and they want to expand to accommodate their increased, or their larger congregation. So, I don't think that was knowingly a situation created by the petitioner. Number four is that the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. If anything, it seems that this could alter the character of the neighborhood in a positive way. The MOR Development Review Board, the first thing that they look at is whether a design fits in with the character of the MOR district, and the MOR Development Review Board unanimously approved the site plan and the building design. So, this would likely enhance the neighborhood's character. Number five is that the variances will not cause a nuisance to adjacent property. The addition won't be encroaching or imposing on any of the residential buildings nearby, and the air conditioning units that would be placed on the north. There is a residential property across the alley from that, but the, those units would have to be screened with a fence, and that should minimize noise, noise and visual nuisance from those. And finally, number six, that the variances generally represent the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. As I mentioned earlier, the only way to really expand this building is to go east and/or south. So, building south, if you're going to be in line with the existing building, you'd already be encroaching into the Birch Street yard by at least 10 and a half feet. If you're expanding to the east, it will, any further expansion than what they're proposing would have to, they'd have to remove some parking in the parking lot, which would cause its own issues. So, it seems that their request is for the minimum, for the minimum deviation necessary. I did point out in the memo that, while yes, the building, you could shorten the building, say, or you could put a flat roof on the building, so it wouldn't be quite as tall as they would like, but that would affect the character of the building, the architectural style, which is unique to Orthodox churches. So, that seems like a reasonable request. Also, with the porch addition, you could probably build it where it doesn't encroach in the front yard, but then you'd be looking at about four feet of usable area on a porch, and if you've ever been on a porch, that's four feet wide, it's not terribly usable, especially if you have people milling about and chatting after a church service. So, it does seem that this is the minimum deviation required. Okay, so that concludes my report. I will go through the options really quick in, for each of these, well, for all of these cases. I will say, so for the variance cases, which I'll just lump together as the major variance cases, the zoning board has the options to forward those cases to the city council with a recommendation to approve them, to approve them as requested, based on the findings in the staff memo. You can forward them to the city council with a recommendation to approve them with certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance requests, and if so, articulate your findings supporting the denial. For the minor variance case, ZBA 2018-MIN-01, the zoning board can approve the variance as requested. You can approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance. I could take any questions, if you like. Looks like the applicant and their architect has stuck around and can answer questions as well, if you'd like from them.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. Does the applicant or anyone on applicant's behalf desire to be heard? No? All right. Hearing nothing further, there's, all three of you are together, correct? Okay, then I see no one that would be speaking in favor, and also, no one who would be speaking in opposition, so I believe we're ready to call the various requests for vote. Is there a motion? And then you can make an omnibus motion, but then we're going to vote on them one by one, I guess. No, we don't have to vote them all?
I would recommend that you vote on the minor variance separately, only because the vote count is different and it goes down a different path. But you could vote on the majors together, if that is your desire.
Okay. Those being major, it's going to work out the same tonight. Those require two-thirds, which would be three out of four, which I believe also would be the same in this particular case for the minor as well, for approval. If the majors are approved, they will then be forwarded on to the city council for further action. All right, then at this time, pursuant to the staff's recommendation, we'll entertain a motion for all of the major variance requests.
I move that we approve and forward to the city council, recommending to approve ZBA 2018-MIN-01, MIN-02, MIN-03, MIN-04, MIN-05.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Or those motions?
Sorry, second.
Is there any further discussion along the lines of the motions? And I believe we are ready to call the major variance motions for vote.
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
And Mr. Cho?
The motions are then approved by the necessary vote requirement to forward them on to the city council for their consideration, which will be at what meeting?
April 2nd.
At the April 2nd city council meeting. Thank you. Now, we are ready for any motion in regards to the minor variance request.
I move that we approve ZBA 2019-MIN-01 as requested, based on the findings outlined in this memo.
It's been so moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's now been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion along those lines? Then I believe we're now ready for that request to be called for vote.
Who's seconded?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
That motion has also been approved by the necessary vote and is in effect. Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? We have no audience, so there's no audience participation. Any staff report?
I'll just point out, I think many of you have received an invitation for Citizen Planner Workshop Training on April 12th. We'll be sure that we send you that in the event that you did not get it, but you are invited to go. They're covering two main topics, legal and procedural issues, and then more of a catch-all about beyond the board and commission. I don't know what that means, to be honest, but it sounds intriguing. So, dinner is included. We'll send you that information, and you are more than welcome to attend.
Thank you. Is there a study session? Our business then being concluded, I move that we adjourn.